...new policy, just to set the stage. Y'all, last June, after pretty thorough research by staff in multiple cities, how they handled the debris policy after multiple public hearings. Again, new policies adopted last June and then did change some things. It added upon its tags to refine will be picked up and not picked up. It addressed how debris must be presented for pickup. So now that this has been going on for 10, 11 months now, we've had a couple work sessions where council members have talked about speaking to constituents about the new policy issue, any issues potentially with application and enforcement. And so we wanted to have an opportunity, not only for us to discuss this at a work session, but also to hear from y'all as to how this is going to plan out. So what I would like to do, since again, this is a work session, I'd like to first follow the members to individually say a few words to help set the stage here. Then we would like to hear from y'all and then we will have a discussion thereafter, also after hearing from y'all. So right now, Ms. Harris, I will start with you and the members will just give, you know, a brief statement and set the stage.
I will be just as brief as I possibly can. I spent several hours researching this issue. We have a real problem here. It's no secret, that's why you're here. We've got a real problem. And you drive around Anniston and you see all the mattresses and furniture out on the street and all that, and we're going to issue citations, but how in the world do we know who's doing it? That's the problem. And it's creating a real unsightly problem for us, for our beautiful city, really. And so I also checked on garbage fees for other cities and I will say, besides Oxford, which does not charge a single thing, Anniston is the lowest city in the entire state that I could find. There is one city that charges $12.89, one $12.99. Most of them are in the twenties is what they are. And in trying to decide what we could do, there are companies that do pick up, you know, bulky items like mattresses and things like that. And I realize this may not be the solution anyone wants, but would it be feasible to raise the fee and to bid this out to companies who might be willing to come out and get these items that nobody can identify who they belong to? That is one terrible eyesore that we have, and I'm thinking possibly that might be a solution to it. The other, another thing that complaint I get is from residents who have nice grass. They don't want to put their grass cuttings on top of the grass because it makes the grass die. They don't want to put their limbs and twigs and all that on top of the grass because it makes them die. In all my research, I did not find a single city that allowed any resident to put anything in the street unless it's properly bagged or unless it's in a detainment. I did find out that the public service services, the community service is worthy of checking into, in some of these areas, they offer a second trash can. You can put your grass clippings and all that in that and it's like five dollars a month extra to pick that up. And so it's just like subscribing to a different service is what it is. There's also a city that has a hotline for people to call and complain about a report who is doing illegal dumping. There are, there's a, actually, as you're going to find out, we lose money because we have a lot of residents who are not paying and they should be paying because they're eligible, they're not eligible to pay it for free. And so we've had a collection agency in the past collect own business licenses that are defined. So why not have the collection agency, you know, do that as well? Some cities have recycling, they have flat screens, TVs to the United Civil Policy. Best Buy takes recycling for electronics. They consume communities, they have a neighborhood cleanup where they can reserve a truck for a Saturday to go into that neighborhood where everyone can bring everyone's everything out and clean the whole neighborhood up. So those are just some of the ideas that I found and I think some of them are worthy of looking at. And I could say more, but I know it's supposed to be brief, so here we go.
Thank you. So I pretty much share the same sentiments as Councilwoman Harris. I know in the beginning, our intentions were with the hopes that people would have more pride in their communities, that they would feel more responsible. I mean, if I put a piece of trash in my yard, why should I expect anyone else to clean it up? In my mind, that was the intention in the beginning. There was also a financial issue with the city, which is why we started having this conversation, spending a hundred thousand plus dollars in landfill fees and tipping fees that were causing great concern financially. And so that's how that conversation started, but what I realized as time has went on, there are some people who do not have the resources, especially our elderly citizens like trucks or things like that to move things. There are some people who simply do not have family to do that for them either, and some people financially cannot pay for someone to move things as well. So that was something that was causing some concern. Also, understanding that this policy is not necessarily enforceable when you don't know who's doing what, and the ones that are suffering from this are the ones that really aren't doing, you know, the issue right hand. And so some of the things that I, in my research was, I know Birmingham, they have a schedule, but it's hard to maintain because Birmingham is absolutely huge, so they don't maintain that at all. They give a lot of work order, work order based work. So if you see an issue in an alley, they submit a work order or talk to someone in public works and that work order is sent and it's done within a two week time span. Also in Talladega, they have, I believe it's once a week where they go around, but also they have a significant lower amount of constituents than we have, about five thousand, six thousand less, and their garbage fee is even higher. They pay about fifteen, forty, fifteen dollars and forty seven cents. So even raising our garbage fees, that was another concern that, you know, I hadn't even been talking about. I do know that as far as maybe creating a weekly schedule, realizing that when we go around in the community, you might have more trash in this area than you do in another area. So if you create this schedule, there might be a day where we can't get to a particular area because of how much trash is in one area. You have to think about it. They're dumping all of this in our dump trucks and then they have to go all the way to the land, they'll dump it and then come back out. So it's in some cases where there is more trash, you just can't follow a schedule. I had, during one of our Anniston changers event, I had some of the guys come out with me to South Anniston to help pick up some of the trash that was out there. South Anniston alone, we might, we maybe stopped at five, four to five places and the entire dump truck was filled, completely filled. And that took us maybe an hour and they had to go all the way to the landfill, tip, dump that and then come back and do the same exact area because you didn't get anything. And so those were some of the concerns that were all to me, but I definitely have been listening to, you know, what my constituents have been saying. Again, people are suffering because of other people's actions and so I do want to take the, and I'm excited to hear what you all have to say, which I think will help us in coming up with a better solution or if there is a solution at hand. So I'm going to be quiet now.
First of all, to take it easy on everyone, thank y'all for coming out. This last time, we had a meeting about this, we had ten people, so it's a server of the book of ten. I'm not going to bore you with the numbers that you've already heard because I've read the same thing. So what we're seeing, we have a problem here. The mayor mentioned that the policy had been improved, been about 10 months into the policy. Actually, it only been over the last six, that goes around the end of October, first of November, when our city staff stopped picking up the trash. And yes, we went through Christmas, we went through all winter, but what happened, what you're not hearing is everywhere there's a dark alley, a dark place, people have dumped stuff. Now, I had a situation, one day I was just riding around looking at stuff and I, and I'll go live and I'll ride around and I'll just point out different things. And that lady called me the next day and one of the areas I roamed, she pointed out that, you know, there was trash on his corner. She told me where she stayed and I just got to her, you know, the articles that I remember seeing on the ground. And she said, yeah, I said, well, you know, we really wish we could have cameras up because we found out, we could find out who did it, you know, we'll, we'll suddenly get a file, you know, it's a court order without it. And she told me, Diddy, I ain't no bitch, I know who did it, but I'm not telling. I said, and I immediately asked her, I said, so why are you calling, asking me to make somebody else do something that somebody else need, you know, correct someone's problem? So now here we are. So one of the things we have to look at in as a city, and these are going to be, I think this is probably one of the decisions that nobody wants to make, but if we want people to come into our city, we want to not become more attractive. Right? So what we're looking at, and I'll be honest, one of the first things I did coming in, when I was campaigning and people were saying, my constituents were saying, they pick up on trash on this side of the town, on the other side of town, I'm going to pick up over here. Okay. I don't know if the staff remember, but we was at our retreat, first thing I said, hey, hey, they say I pick up on, on one side of town, I'm going to pick up on my side of town. And then most of the folks have to put the orders on the board. So one of the things you may not know is that, their only thing changed with the orders that we did in June of last year, we changed terminology. And if you read both ordinances, the old ordinances, the old ordinance that was, and put it, put signed into law, was signed into place in 2001, allowed us to put out four tires, four tires that were not attached to the wind. We don't accept the tires now, so there was no real major changes. The problem happened is, and I tell people, I'm responsible for all the trash, right? Because we can't have an ordinance on the books and not at least try to enforce it. So as we try to enforce this ordinance, this is what we come up with. A number figure was thrown out in 2020, we had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in landfill fees that we would not have incurred if we were not picking up this trash. Now, everybody in here is complaining about potholes, complaining about something, some flooding or something, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is going along with, when we're talking about city services. I understand. We've done it for so long. Another issue, another issue I see with what we're, things we have to deal with, there, from my understanding, we have a, if you're, if you're a certain age, you can get your fee, what do they call it? Not per rated, wait, okay. Now, we have a gentleman come in and I'm, you know, just saying, he came in saying, he was a veteran, he felt like he should not have to pay. And I get that. I respect all the veterans, I respect everybody who came out, who's done everything to help protect our country. But if you're looking to make up our city, if we waive all the veterans and we waive all the elderly who don't need a certain income, then we're basically working for free. Now, I understand, that ruffles feathers, that ruffle feathers. I'm okay with having a waivable garbage fee. I feel what's in place right now should, you know, if we want, if those people will be waived, I think we need to reevaluate the, we need to look at the cutoff line, but also anything that we adopt from this point forward, I think it should be nonwaivable. Reason being, we want an attractive city, we want people to come down and pick up our trash. But I think when I did the calculation, just off the top of my head, the way, the way the crew works, we had one, one loader, two dump trucks, basically five workers. Just say if you give them an average, an immediate income of our laborers on the ground crew, we'll assess fifteen dollars. If our people, fifteen dollars, if forty hours a week, that's three thousand dollars, was it three, yeah, three thousand dollars a day, which on a fifty-two week period is a hundred and fifty, six thousand dollars for one crew. Now, if you add in the equipment that we're going to need, you're adding about another two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the dump trucks and the mowers. So in order to increase our crews, you look, increase one crew, you're looking at, just on a basic average, a startup for one crew, about four hundred thousand dollars. Now, we have money out of common somewhere. And listen, I, I, I wouldn't talk to everybody individually, but when we get to talking about some, another city, about how much they make, how much this, we don't have the luxury of some, of some cities. But what we do have is citizens who care, and we do have a city staff that wants to do the right thing. Now, gassing, I don't know, how many people, how many people are okay with how, how gas is going on right now? I'm not. So when gas is going on, personal vehicles, this is about the dump trucks and what, so the cost of picking up this trash has increased on the city. And I, I know what I'm saying is not going to be pleasing to a lot of people, but we're going to have, I mean, I don't see any other way around it. So do we want to keep going where we're doing, but we want to take a shot at making our city the top city in the state?
Well, being in the last gives me an opportunity to be brief. You guys have heard the issues. We've heard the issues. We hear it from you every week. The unfortunate thing about it is the people that I'm sitting here looking at right now are not the people that are causing the problem. The people that are having to live with the problem. We appreciate you guys. We appreciate you guys and what you're doing to try to make our city a better place. We understand that you are not the culprit to the problem. We knew when we started this discussion a year ago about garbage and how we were going to try to enforce our ordinance, modify it, make it easier to understand and then enforce it, that there were going to be some growing pains. We're trying to change the culture of our community, a culture that has been entitled to put their trash on the road and know that the city is going to come get it. We built that expectation in our populace. When I say we, I'm speaking of previous councils, for the last twenty years, thirty years, we've been doing this. We've been collecting this for everybody. So every, this expectation lives within us all. We knew when we did this that this was going to create a day like today. We knew it. There's a critical mass that comes to everything and we, we knew when we took this, that we were going to get the heat for it, that our hope was that the citizens in our community would recognize the value of a clean city, of taking care of their own, of taking care of cleaning up their own messes and making it work, that to this point has not quite proved to be the case, right? Now we've got people that rather than put it out in front of their own yard, will put it in a truck, drive into a dark alley in the middle of the night and dump it in your alley, behind your building, behind your house. So clearly they have the ability to get that trash where it should go, they're just choosing to do it the wrong way. So we're still fighting that culture. And unfortunately, we'd have to have cameras everywhere in order to be able to figure out how to do this and how to see this, and everybody doesn't want a camera looking at all this. I mean, that's not the solution. So I don't know what our answer is. We've talked about, you know, I mean, we budget a million dollars a year, a little over a million dollars a year for trash pickup. We collect, last year we collected nine, a little under nine hundred thousand. So we're losing a hundred thousand dollars on trash collection without picking up all this excess stuff. When you add in the tipping fees and the employees and the time loss and the gas and the equipment ware and all of the factors that get in there, we're probably losing seven, eight hundred thousand dollars annually picking up this stuff because you've got to calculate all that other stuff in. You've got employee salaries, you've got the time that they spend doing that and not doing the job that they were hired to do. You've got the cost of maintaining that equipment, you've got the fuel to carry it to and from the dump, you've got the tipping fees that come at the dump, you've got all of those things. We've tried a bunch of different things. As y'all know, we put these, we've had these free, the county has free dump days once a quarter. Great idea. I think RD was part of that coming in being, thank you. So what did we do? We tried to do something similar in the city. We put these sled dumpsters out, in each ward, we have a location in each ward and we leave them out there, actually this last time for a whole week, to give people time to bring their debris there. And we set them strategically in the middle of the free dump days that are offered by the county. So effectively, there are eight days out of the year, or eight times out of the year that you can dispose of your furniture, waste, whatever it is, for free. Now you've got to get it there. I understand that there is a problem with some getting it there. There is always a problem. I also quite frankly thought that there would be some entrepreneurial companies that came about and said, hey, there's an opportunity for us to make some money, we'll start up a company and we'll call ourselves the Trash Man and we'll go pick up your waste and we'll charge you just a little bit more than the tipping fee costs and we can make a living off of this. That didn't happen either, but I would have loved to have seen something like that happen as well. So there's opportunities out there to solve this. I'm not sure exactly what our answer is. I think it's going to be a combination of a bunch of things. I think it's going to be continuing to fight to increase community awareness and community responsibility in maintaining our streets. It's going to be some additional fees that we're going to have to do. There's going to be some milling of ground that's going to have to happen here, I think, in order for us to solve the problem in a way. Now, I live on a tight budget, just like everybody else. I don't want to spend any money, but I would spend five, four dollars not to have to drive by a pile of trash every, every day. I think we, I think we all live in that world and I can tell you, from every corner of my ward, I've heard the complaint. And I know that everybody up here has heard it from every corner of their ward, there have been complaints. So it's not, it's not an economic issue, it's, it's a culture issue. We have bred this over twenty years, we're trying to change that. We've got to do a better job of it. I don't know what the exact answer is.
Okay, let's, let's hear from y'all now. We'll try to do this in as quarterly fashion as possible, so that everyone who wants to speak will be able to speak, will, you know, leave comments, three minutes, I'll, I'll keep the time up here. But so whoever wants to speak, please come forth to my microphone, if you would, just state your, your name, address, some, some, so.
Well, I guess I go first, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Catherine McLeister. Nineteen fifteen, while I'm at it. Nineteen fifteen, complaints about one guy said that that dumpster's out, but I seen two or three dumpsters out, but they weren't open, they was locked. One on 12th Street was locked, and one on twenty something more or something like that. It was, did have a chain on it. So they not open all the time, I don't know what hours you are open, but they, they have locks on them. So I noticed two of them.
So what happened, you put those out more like three days, and they were out total three? I want to say two days this last time. They, you have, either.
The last time we had the loader trucks out, and it was one day in each ward, and we had, we had our employees out helping to load and whatnot.
The dumpsters, she's talking about.
None of the dumpsters we put out, none of the trucks, none of those have any locks on them, no chains, no anything, everything we put out.
On 12th Street, I know they had a lock on it, and the one I saw up there on twenty something had a lock on it.
Those are private, private, private dumpsters. So those are private dumpsters, they're locked in.
And then y'all keep talking about paying people to help pick up the trash. What about, what y'all going to do about the people that's locked up? That y'all feed, we feed them every day, three meals a day, why they can't get out here? I don't see anybody out here.
It's been a long time on the bypass.
They're not ready for the city, it's ready for the county.
County, we see a pound, we see a beth, usually they in the county, we see a beth for bypass, so they leave a little bell coming to pick up the street. So I think that's a good idea, trying to get some of those people back here, instead of paying people that have to load up dumpsters and get out of here. You know, y'all may not agree with it, but that's the way I see it.
Yeah.
And I have one more, I forgot what that word was, I'm sorry, but if I have time, I'd do that there.
If, 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 if I'm not going to your door and sit down and talk, because that idea is come up forward, but now just want to sit down and talk about it.
Okay.
Hello, my name is, uh, Deborah Turner, I live on, I live on 12th Street. I don't want to, it's a certain area I put the dumpsters in, y'all can rotate around like the elderly, they might have transportation, the people in the rear deck can put their trash, uh, dumps on a location instead of go now, South Avenue, 22nd, 40th area, rotate around, y'all, y'all do it there.
They, they aren't.
They haven't been on our street.
Well, I mean, we, we can put these kids in the real day.
On the elderly's street.
Yeah, well, we, we, the first time we put them out, we put them out in one place, they didn't up there. I know at least in Ward Two, we tried one place, it didn't work, we didn't get much success with much trash in that, so we moved into a second location.
We have plenty of stuff on the 11th Street.
Sure.
On 11th Pine, some people just dump stuff outside of the road all the time. They have limbs and trash, we send them together sometimes, y'all, the city, the holders, ass aside, pick up a limb, boy, y'all can't wait for it.
I don't know.
Maybe that's something we can talk about, maybe rotating our dumpsters that we do quarterly, if that's something we continue to do. Because it's going to be, I'm going to be honest with you, to, to, to put trash bins on every street, that's going to be kind of hard, but I do think that maybe if we can find hotspot locations, you know, that we can rotate quarterly, I think that's a good idea.
I think it's also important to know, I think that's a good idea too. I also think it's important to know that the way they pick that stuff up is, stuff that can go to the incinerator doesn't get picked up with the trash, right? Because we don't have to pay to dump the incineration stuff, we already have an incinerator, we burn that stuff up. So that, there's a better solution for, that's the reason sometimes they separate limbs and trash, is because the limbs may go to a launching program or an incineration program as opposed to go into the dump. When it all gets mixed together, if we don't separate it, we have to take it all to the dump and we're paying to dump stuff that really shouldn't go to the dump, it doesn't have to dump either. I mean, they, they've got limited space as well, so.
But if you can't just say the workers separated it, I'll be, and they're not going to do that, it's more than leaving like it is. If our, if our constituents are not separating, our city employees are not going to take the time to separate it. That's why we ask for the, in the ordinance, is asking to be separated, I think, by at least three feet. So I mean, we just, one thing we can't do, we can't enforce a policy if we're not strictly adhering to that policy. And I think what happens, once we start altering it just to go for just to make do, then some things get done that probably shouldn't have been done because of, it was trash in the, in the, in the limbs, in the grass, any type of trash that should have been left there, we should have gone from question of them to, or the, the essential to separate. Now that's according to the ordinance.
Your floor remains up. Yes, ma'am. Thanks.
I'm Sophia Watson, I live in Beaumont, and the whole reason, you all addressed a lot of, you all addressed a lot of issues tonight, but my main concern is people that don't have transportation. This turn, it's so good, I'm putting the dumpsters in distant areas, but I live over by Millwood, and the people that don't own anything, they throw their trash anywhere in front of the door, and I have a problem with that. I have a problem with it. And a lot of the times you say your workers are out working and they spend so many hours a long time, you see them just right. Just right. Now, what you need to do is clock him. And then we wouldn't be spending out so much money. Because they're not always worth it. They're riding out somewhere, they are rotating. And then when they decide they want to come back and pick it up, they'll do this. Thank you.
You know the way you should call people when you came in and jumped over like that. But, guys, it's gonna sound like I'm defending the workers. But here's what we have. If we start on one side of the city, just say, if they're going in through Mount area, and the truck is moving. And as they're riding through to the dump, they have to pass L Street. There's a pile of dumpster, trucks, and keep going. And I understand we see, sometimes we may see them ride around and the trucks are not loaded. One of my constituents, he was in the truck, and I could see over there now. But, I mean, that's the door though. But, so, it is... A lot of times we wish they'd hide and take the breaks, but then they're still hiding. But this is one that's gonna take some time. Truck, as we, as the employees start to understand the policy and understand, "I can't pick up a mom and dad, or my cousins on the other side of the road, I can't do that labor," then we'll be able to get a true understanding of what we have. Not true, we, I think in the first, one of the meetings we had last year over at Ward Four, one of the gentlemen was telling us about how he could tell you to use that toilet behind, over by, go with the larger side. And we need to understand. I mean, and when we hear it, when we get to their boss, they're gonna know. But one thing, so, I know there's a, no telling policy, but these people are actually working to keep our city better and it's something that you all can't help but do. Because you got, at least you got ten hours up here. We can't be everywhere all the time, the city's a thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure that we have two hundred and fifty miles of road in City Madison. That's just roads. I didn't count the apples. So two hundred and fifty miles of road, I think. Councilwoman Smith, you mentioned earlier, if you fill up a truck, and just say the truck is at Blue Mountain, or the truck is at Golden Springs. Fill up a truck at Golden Springs, that dump truck has to leave and go dump. Anybody who's driven Golden Springs to the dump, that's a bit twenty to twenty-five minutes. And by the time you get to dump, you go spend at least twenty to twenty-five minutes at the dump site. And another twenty to about in the back. So a lot of times when they're riding around, they're going, they're going to a company to a certain site. It is hard, it's hard to understand that, when you got trash on your street and they ride on your bike. But hey, they could stop right here and pick this up. And, you know, so we gotta keep them at least on some type of cycle circle or some type of incentive in order to try to get progress. I'm sorry.
I think accountability is important up against, so I definitely hear what you're saying. And that's something we need to address with our city manager as well.
Also, I'm a real member of these teams. A lot of us have transportation to put our trash there, so I don't feel like the team should go up because a lot of people not put this trash out. So, I mean, I'm not doing trash out there, but for debris for people. I mean, I do put my limbs in, my leaves and stuff like that. But to pay a, you know, see, my trash bin is not for daily use. So, I mean, that's a good discount. You know, if y'all don't stop by going up, I don't know who pays anymore. Because my trash bin is not for daily use.
Yeah. Creating an individual plan for every single constituent of the city is just, is so unrealistic. So knowing that this is a concern for the majority, unfortunately, you guys are suffering because of what other people are doing. And sometimes in order for us to meet halfway, we do have to kinda compromise on that end. It's a financial concern for the city and we have to kinda address that, you know, moving forward. Ms. McLeister, that's your name? The trash can that you're referring to on Twelve Street is actually a recycling bin that the county puts out. And so it has a lock on it because it's not meant for trash. And I believe they have like recycling things, so, just for clarification.
Your floor remains up.
Some funny, because I, you know, fourteen eleven, you know, I have a lot of bricks on the corner, and they can take, pick up, and there's about a month of, and what's wrong?
What was that address?
Fourteen eleven.
What's your name again?
There's a lot of bricks, we've had about, a bit of months.
What's your name again? Danny.
So, I'm Jonathan Maddox. I'm president of Rocky Hollow Neighborhood Association and I'm here on there behalf. Ten years ago, the residents that lived in that area retired over the gangs and the drugs and the prostitutes, and they're gonna fight for the trash. And so we got together, some help with this, with current councilor. And we formed this association and we started meeting almost every month for the last ten years. And we have worked with every single person, councilperson, mayor, city manager, especially code enforcement, everyone that we possibly can look with, our fire, our police. And we have made huge progress on that part of our city. You know, we don't have the gangs and we don't have, we don't have the prostitutes or the drug dealers, or at least they've learned to be very quiet about it. So we've picked up trash for ten years. And we're all ten years older. And most of us are, who care, are part of this association, are elderly. Some of them have walkers and canes. They can't possibly pick up a mattress and take it anywhere. You know, we have done everything that we can to help with this situation. And we need your help. And, you know, figuring it out, you know, hoping that the residents who are creating the problem are going to be able to figure it out and come around and do the right thing is very wishful thinking. Even when you tell them that they can't do it, they still do it. Because that's what they wanna do. And, you know, about telling people, would you just tell them? "Oh, we'll tell you. We'll tell you. This person put it up by their house." "We'll tell you. This person dropped it off." We will tell you who's doing it. But our understanding is, is that unless we physically see them do it and are willing to testify, or it's not gonna be any good. And enforcing, we're not willing to enforce it. So those options don't seem to be available to us. And nobody wants their fees to be raised. What we need is for you to solve the problem. Somebody's going to be unhappy. Make somebody unhappy. And solve the problem so you don't have to live in the dump. We need your help. We need you to stand up and make that decision for us. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Evening, my name. I'm Diana Michael Schneider. My husband and I reside at four eleven East Sixth Street. We also have a second residence at sixteen sixteen McCall Drive. One is in Sierra's Ward and the other one is in Jay's Ward. And some of you who pass by our historic home on Tyler Hill probably know that we're refurbishing it right now. And I'll tell you, it's not an inexpensive project. We're a year and a half in, spending now more than six figures. And every day we look at each other and we ask, "Why are we doing this?" We're buried in trash. We're invested six figures in the city right now by refurbishing a historic home. And yet, the neighbors can park in the driveway, get out old appliances, now we're buried in mattresses and furniture. Then I'll take you over to McCall Drive. We're both business owners, so we work out our home offices. And I'm a member of the Rocky Hollow Neighborhood Association with Jennifer. And all we've talked about now for eight months is trash. And that became poignant at Christmas because we decided to host Christmas at my house, which was the sixteen sixteen McCall Drive, because the other house was under construction. Now, how do I get my uprendly mobile, twenty-eight-year-old nephew from Dallas and his wife into my neighborhood without seeing the trash? So there's four or five ways in, but I could not find a way to get them to my house for the holidays without seeing the trash. Our neighbors had the same problem for Easter. How do I get my family here without passing light in what looks like we live in a different country? So, we collectively support anything and everything you can do to bring back some sort of collective, citywide pickup of this debris, so that we don't have this again. I was talking with Jackson Hodges. When he's outlining all the beautiful things you guys are doing downtown, which sound wonderful, including a farmer's market. But like I told him, sometimes it's like putting lipstick on a pig when your neighborhoods are going to see. And while watching that happen, on the way, you let that happen, your city is gone, regardless of a new farmer's market or not. So I know there are solutions. There's ways that you can possibly come together and support that and do something for this city. Invest back into us and reward those of us that are trying. I don't think they're gonna ever change the culture. I think this is the culture we live in today. I think we have a lot of slum lords who also don't care. And so somehow, some way, we all have to pitch in, even if our fees have to be raised. We have to pitch in to live in the city. We have to participate in this city. And the trash is getting out of hand and we just wanna support your efforts and thank you for listening to us and hearing what we have to say to you. But I wanna let you know, a lot of people are investing in this city. Please invest back into us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you all for having us for a session, first of all. And I heard you all, your thoughts on this problem. Really, the all, it's complicated, problem. Take a pause there, it's complicated. But I think it's clear, in order to address this, this whole apartment, and that's the amount of time that I would. It's garbage fees, or however else you think is appropriate. But we're gonna have to raise some money to deal with this problem. And I live in an area where a lot of people walk, and they ride bikes, and they run, and jog, and that sort of thing. And the alleys are in really bad shape. And some of the streets are in really bad shape. You know, not just that it's unsanitary, but when we see those things, it really makes us think less of our city. And it's not, it's not what we want. It's not what you want. The problem is, it's complicated, it's certainly expensive. It won't probably ever be completely solved, but it's something that, that we can make a huge dent in. I think it goes hand in hand, really, with this problem and it's partly an educational issue. A lot of people don't understand that they need to be doing this. There's... It's an environmental problem as well. There's really no good way to recycle anything in Aniston. It's very difficult. Those are the most unlikely to recycle what we can out of our household. And as I see a lot of this trash and debris on the streets and alleys, I see a lot of it is recyclable. And I'm not suggesting that the city workers go through and try to recycle anything, but it's an educational issue. I think if we would focus more on environmental issues and treat this as an environmental problem as well as a social problem or aesthetic problem, as more of a broader picture of how we look, how we care for our city, I think it will, I think it will yield great benefits.
Does anyone else wish to be...
Oh, yes, sure. So ladies and gentlemen, I guess we back y'all for coming out. And if you're here, that means you care. Now, maybe it's something you have on your brain or something you want, something you may say that may spark something in us. So, I mean, we don't know everything. So I ask that, if anyone is here, if you would, just please get up and say something so we can... I mean, because I need all the help I can get. So if y'all were just ones who haven't said anything, then... I mean, because this is, it's hard to make a decision for the city when we never hear from anybody. If you would please indulge us.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rita Paris and I live on Charlotte Avenue, sixteen eighteen. And I've been kinda looking at the city budget. And I think there's ways that y'all could transfer money from the budget. I mean, three-quarters of a million dollars for golf course, golf course that none of us can even afford to go to. The parks are kept up, parks are recreation, and my son tried to give his kids into, um, bottle and stuff. It is so expensive that most of us can't afford that either. So you're spending all this money, I think it was over five hundred thousand dollars. That's a hundred million dollars I'm at. You know, it's our money. And we don't wanna be buried in trash. That's what I call it, buried in trash. And it's, I'm ashamed to live in this city. I'm ashamed for my friends to come see me. I'm ashamed for my relatives to come see me. And y'all should be ashamed to be the mayor and the city council in this city. You know, I'll just say when I think, I don't try to, you know, uh, you know, just wash things over. We're buried in trash. And the cities are, are in decay. So who are y'all gonna be mayor, uh, mayor and city council over where there's nothing left? It's almost like Ukraine when you look at it, the bombings and stuff. All the houses running, and I run around, it's north, south, east and west. Everything is in decay. And the trash, there was a lady sitting on the front porch, and I noticed her, sitting up there. She's probably elderly. She had some kids downstairs and she was looking over. And that's a hundred feet from these kids with this big pile of trash with rats running out of it. Do y'all live where that's at? Are y'all buried in trash too, where you live? I don't know where any of you live. I had looked it up, but... So you don't think you should do something about it?
That's why we're having the meeting today.
I appreciate your fairness, but all this stuff y'all saying has not worked. And it's not building work. Because people are old and they're poor, they don't have trucks, that's what they're talking about. We don't have any way to take it even to the dumpsters. And who can pick up a water-soaked mattress? Do you know how much that would weigh? I've just been laying out in the rain and soaked and all this trash, all these old chairs and... I don't know where they get all this stuff. Maybe they were spreading it here or something. But anyway, there's so much of it. I just, I was just in shock. I went around and made pictures of it. But it would take them years to make pictures of all the houses that's... And people aren't holding it. I think they're just going in in front of their house, or maybe in front of somebody else's house on the same street. Because they don't really have any way to haul it off. And they've got no money to pay anybody to haul it off. Now, I mean, I have paid people to take some of it for me because I don't live in my yard and I don't live across the street and I don't live down the street. It is illegal to dump it. But we need to do something. Everything that y'all say is not working. And it's like, I can't say there is nothing working.
Thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like... Just walking in. My name is Mamie Bus Copping. I live at three thousand High School Avenue.
Bus Copping?
Yes, Bus Copping. The first part of this is a selfish part on my side is, I fought for years in terms of getting the grass cut over at the senior citizen apartment complex with it. And I'm hoping that that is being cut, is going to continue. This is summertime now and I can see the grass moving on, okay? So now that I have that out, I'm sure you resonate with what I'm trying to say. Absolutely. Second part of it is, I just wanna pay back on what the two other people have said. I haven't been to a city council meeting until now, in two, two steps, taking the place in terms of the new members. However, Aniston always have... However, Anniston always has, in my mind, seems to be a place where it's the last of the counties or cities to be, bits or worked on. And I'm seeing more dilapidated houses. Of course, the dogs go into when it rains and it's cold outside. But the worst part is, I'm seeing lots of mattresses and wood and branches and furniture and... I go to Golden Springs, I'm a retired teacher, okay? But I saw a lot, one of my favorite schools is Golden Springs because it really is very protected in a way. Things are a lot better than they are in some of the other schools. So I can go in and I'm gonna have a good time teaching. It is what it is. We change it or we don't, or we protect ourselves. My, my problem is, my brother sitting here, who would never say anything, but me going by his house and seeing wood and lumber and trash just piled up. He lives on Lehman, Lehman Avenue. That's not the only place. I see it all over. I see it everywhere. And then he said to me that there was some kind of rule that you guys had voted on that you're no longer going to pick up or remove trash other than, I guess, trash in a container on the side of the road. Well, you got all the houses that no one lives in and they dump everything there. You got wild dogs running everywhere. And then on top of that, you have mattresses, like the lady just said, that's soaked and urine and everything else. And then you got the smell and you got the unsightliness of what it looks like. I almost wanna just close my eyes every time I decide to go work or whatever. It does not represent Alabama the beautiful and definitely doesn't represent Anniston. So my, my comment is, hopefully you will reconsider if that became vote. And secondly, if you wanna continue that vote, take in mind that these, these poor people, they don't have the transportation, the means or the money to haul this stuff to someplace where it should go. So that's right, 'cause I think...
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be here? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer Howard. I stay one ninety South Waller Avenue. Um, I was kinda picking back in the, the thing is, I want to know about the schedule. What scheduling do we have in place? Because if we know as a citizen and as a advertiser, because we, this is a short notice that we even knew about this, what do we have in place saying, okay, this is trash on this day? Or can we call, like put in work orders and put in something in place saying, okay, we got a million of them fit. So, or anything, because right now, I want to know, I walked in late and I ain't get to hear. So I was trying to figure out what is the schedule? 'Cause maybe we can do it on our part, but may, it's some, it's some things that we are not able to do. What is the schedule in place? Like, are you going to each ward, one by one, ward one? And this one, we're gonna draw people to ward one, ward two? And so, so constituents, we can know, okay, you gonna come to our, our side of town at this time? So we can have our stuff together that is in a certain place? Or where is this place that you're setting in?
Well, you know, there, there's information on the website and multiple documents, but we recognize that there's also an education piece to this, disseminating information out. So, I mean, clearly, you know, I think we can look at other ways to make sure people are aware of the schedule and, and as, as we go through these policies so that folks can be made aware of, you know, what's going on, how's it we're doing. Yeah, I mean, folks have mentioned, and I recognize that disseminating this information out is, is a big part of this piece to...
I know, um, excuse me. I'm sorry. I know as far as, um, like fallen tree limbs or things like that, things that are, you know, we need to be paying attention to right at that moment. You can call the city hall and put in a work order public works and they can, you know, trace that as soon as possible. Um, there is a scheduled for brush pickup, if I'm saying that correctly. And that is on our website as well. Um, and I also believe that, um, Jackson has posted it on our city Facebook, which I understand everybody doesn't have social media. So I did that, I did that a hundred percent as well. But that information is on our website. Now, when it comes to trash, it is very hard to maintain a schedule when it comes to picking up. Because like I said, in some areas you have so much trash. And let's say, uh, say you're in Anniston...
Are you divided by, there's one ward that ten people to approve? Do they like divide out of that one?
No. David, can you kinda explain what that looks like as far as picking up, what our manpower is?
Yes, ma'am. Generally, it, it depends on the seasons because our brush trucks and our vacuum, our leak vacuums are essentially the same crew. Um, so at any time, you have one brush truck going around year round. Um, our schedule is divided into four weeks. And luckily, our street superintendent's smarter than I am and knows how to go through which streets that they can get within that week, within the next week, within the next week. And that's what Jackson and, and Councilwoman Smith talked about, being on the Facebook page and all that. Um, so all the time, we have one brush truck going around and that is just simply for brush. If we find a large amount, we will put another brush crew on it and take away from, say, grass cutting or, or pothole filling or something else. We will establish that second crew to come in and make sure that that is done during that week. But that's only brush, that's not trash at all.
Do we have, are we gonna be some of the worst part? Like we have a worst... So like maintaining a schedule? Yeah. I, I think if you want to say that, I would say no.
The reason we say no is, if there's a decision to start picking up trash, to pick up everything that's been put out now, first and foremost, it's gonna take at least two or three months to even try to get everything that we have out of, with maintaining the right resources that they have. So at that point, it also depends on what happens in the city. You can't hold accountable for how, I think, so my idea is they start off on one, say they start off at the door of end because the way, the way a ward's divided, a ward's divided to where you can't go from ward to ward without picking up trash off one side of the street, not double side of the street. And that's not really convenient. You know, you really can't do that in, in a dump in town. So as they go to pick up, they said, if it's, if it's on one side, due to a spore or due to Christmas, it may take them a while to do that up. But I think if you look on the website, you guys have covered it already. There is where you can put in a work order on our website. It's, um, Citizen Resources, but it's not allowed to put in, put in, put in a work order and good transportation ads and all that. Trying to get a pinpoint schedule for picking up all of this stuff that we don't know. Because on any given day, we don't know who's bought wood or who's throwing things out. So where it may, you can take a, a week to do, just say the Blue Mountain Global area around Christmas time, I guarantee it's gonna take at least about two weeks for we throw all our manpower over there or nothing else. So I think what we're looking at, I believe we have something where you can see the progress of the city. On, on the website, it has what areas they have targeted, what week, it's color coded on a map. So if it's yellow today, if you're week one, week one, yellow, that mean they're coming to your area. Uh, you may look at it, it's already week one, you may not, you may have missed that time. But just understanding the first week and the next month, that will be your town. That, that piece is there. It's just a matter of just trying to communicate and educate. One thing I will say, the website that been developed is you and friendly and I think it's on... If the council and the city staff, we, we're gonna, we're gonna try to give everybody pleasure stuff to build that job of educating citizens. Because as you said, you're the one, you asked about a work order. If you put in a work order, that mean I don't want to come out and see exactly what you're talking about before the work order you put in. Or it may be something that they, if you pick this up with touches as opposed to sending out a whole crew. So something, a lot of times visuals, yeah. So if you have pictures, I encourage you to take pictures when you upload it, if you wanted to go about the website. And the website is W W W Anniston Alabama, all one word.
A L. Anniston A L dot gov.
Anniston A L.
Is there any way that they can call us? We have like older people, they're not gonna...
You can always call us, you can always.
And that's why I had a work order for you.
But now, so, and, and, I told my mom, I was gonna be eight. And we mentioned about the mattresses and all the other things that we have outside. I understand we have other people who sometimes can't, can't move things around. But one, if we could get them to take it from the house to try to call somebody to haul it off then as opposed to getting it outside, you, you sort of, and, and it's a catch for me too. We, we'll, we have, we have things that come out. So if we, if we get it outside, we should be able to try to call and help or at least notify somebody, not calling me out, I mean, or volunteer with the change or other. And, and I think there's ways that we want to, I think, I think we can find ways to help. Uh, but I think right now, we're just suffering from just a bunch of neglect and a bunch of, I don't want to... One last thing I will say is, the pandemic did our city no favors. I mean by that, it's that was a real, I'm gonna let that. There were more people at home that weren't my age, so a lot of people did want to spread clean because I swear, I swear before anybody I ever loved, I've never seen as many mattresses out on the side of the street in the city. I bet you have fifty, fifty of them and I promise you, everybody have their mattress to be. Everybody, there couldn't be another mattress in town, but they all on the side of the road.
Does anyone else wish to be here?
I need one, I got a second question. We keep talking about trash, what about these stray dogs? I got so many in my neighborhood, every time you turn around, you have a puppy.
Goodness.
Yeah, baby.
We're feeding the dogs. I know the dogs, we're feeding them dogs.
We recognize that's an issue there.
I, I, I wanna say real quick, we...
We're not feeding them dogs, we're feeding them...
We're not, I wanna say real quick, we're not making, I know you hear us kinda giggling and stuff up here and I said that. We're not making light of no issue. Uh, we take it as seriously as you do. It bothers us like it bothers you. Uh, we take, as, I mean, we all went through the process of coming up here and serve, uh, running for these seats, working hard to it. Ain't no revenue stream that comes from sitting up here in these seats. I guarantee you that, okay? We here, we here because we love our city too. Each and every one of us are here because we love our city. Um, I've been doing this now for ten years. And I'm proud of my city. I am, but at the same time, I am disappointed in each and every one of you and the look that we see out there when we drive our streets. Uh, it, there is not a neighborhood out there that is not impacted by this. Uh, it's not like we all live in a little neighborhood somewhere where this ain't going on. It's going on everywhere. Uh, and, uh, we see it too, we live with it too, and we are trying to come up with a solution here. Uh, and we, we ask you to come in here today in hopes that you've got, I mean, we, we beating ourselves to death trying to find a solution. As, um, Mr. Dennis said, it's complicated. It is very complicated. It'd be great if we could say, well, you know, shoot, we'll just close golf courses and close parks and we'll just take that money and we'll do that. But then you take away people's quality of life. And while all of us don't use the golf course, all of us don't use the park, there are a lot of them that do and there are a lot of people that wouldn't move in this community if they didn't have those kind of identities. You've got provides a quality of life and environment too. You have beautiful, clean streets and nothing to do, people aren't gonna come here. Uh, it, it takes a balance, uh, in all of that. And we gotta figure out what that balance is. And there may be some shifting that's gotta happen in some of that. But we gotta figure out what that balance is in order for us to be a successful community.
Yes, sir, if you will, state your name.
My name is Rudy Mike Wuster. I stay on West Councilman in nineteen eighty-four, Avenue. I've been there since eighty-five, with my home. When I first moved there, we had a nice neighborhood, older people. But since that time, a lot of people have passed away, plenty of people that, uh, really don't own anything and don't have respect for the spirit or the property. Uh, some people, we call that a need to go in, and they don't seem to care their homes and their house, falling around with the evacuation, you know? Saying to the city a few times about, uh, putting those stuff on the house that they don't want to remove it, despite how I promised them to, to stay and do it. Uh, a lot of that's the older meaning. I think the city's trying to, I don't know why they do this. Plus now, why is he getting this on me? Because you know I own a roof and a side fence, so I had to go on the other side and cut the trailer and do that, and I was doing that. But all we got is some place of trash and stuff on the alleyway. And, uh, I saw a truck on two, a trailer, backing to the guy's yard. A few, few doors up from me on the side of the alley. And I saw some people moving in. And they put a fence up and everything blocked. You couldn't see what was going on. But once they got everything unloaded, they made about two or three trips, got everything unloaded, they took the fence down, they started piling everything on the alley. It wasn't your burden. Where the city, also to the city, picked up a lot of that stuff, cleaned it up. And now, most of it out there, capping, jail. And I know you sent the notice out, just yard debris. And so, you know, it, it, it's a habit that was formed a long time ago. You used to be, put everything out there, the city come out and pick it up, no matter what. Things change, people gotta change with it. The problem we got, the people that we got around our areas now, don't own anything, don't have any pride in anything. So, you know, we gotta enforce that some, some kind of way. If they gonna take surveillance, then put surveillance out there on the, the spots that you have a problem with. I know you got some problems everywhere. Yeah, you're at the biggest problem you gonna have is the one you need to focus on first. I mean, surveillance. If I haven't put my trail camera up and focused around my area, that's what I'm doing. As long as I get some follow-up on it, once I turn it in, I mean, I'm not running anywhere. I don't care if they don't like me or whatever. You gotta have some respect for the area and the people that's in it. And I don't see, it's, it's majority of the young folk there. But, you know, they, they respect me 'cause I don't deal with them.
Right.
Some, some y'all do it here.
Well, we, we...
Those folks, they deal with that stuff.
I know we're gonna...
Yes, sir.
And if you want to see everybody working together, then they're problematic.
Yes, sir.
And roll out dumpsters? I need to know where they're located, so I can tell somebody where they need to go and pull these up and stuff like that. I, I don't know where that's at. I've heard, talked of them, but I don't know exactly where they're located.
Right, we only put them out once a month, or once a quarter, or they put them out once a quarter.
For how many days?
Well, we put them out the week before, I think the last time we put them out, the second week of, uh, second week of the month, and it was in the week before U County.
It's coordinated.
Yeah, it's coordinated, yeah.
The second week of...
Second, second week of, well, so the next one will be, next time we put some out should be in July.
So it's not every month.
Okay, no, no, so it's a quarter. It's a quarter.
And we'll get with you on whether you're okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
Yes, sir, if, if you would, please take a minute to press for...
Uh, my name is Frank DeBose. I live at seven hundred Quayle Drive in Lindell subdivision. Uh, what we start on, got a young man to go around and police up the area that everybody come and enter Lindell. It's hard. If we didn't... If we didn't have this young man to come around and pick up the trash, it would be just like some of these other areas. And one of those areas where I have a house at, down on Grant. I got a house down on Grant. I hate to even go down there to collect the rent. Because tell the operator, you got to get the grass cut, you got to move those mattresses. Gee whiz, I'm collecting sand. Everybody can buy new mattresses, but they can't pay the rent. So. We're gonna get this city better. We got, got a young man who has a knife. He, uh, picked up the trash for us from, uh, the car store around here all the way up to Constance Town. Constance Town have a young man and I stop a lot of times. He doing a great job. He can pick up the trash this morning, this afternoon. Good luck, you never move in too. But, uh, like I say, we're gonna get that. We just have to keep believing in that. And, uh, we're gonna work towards that, to get that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, well, listen, I, I really appreciate everybody coming out again. I mean, we, we here and, 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 and we have, we recognize this is an issue. We recognize we're the only thing that makes this city ever bring a family. Because the affairs of that city is obviously a paramount issue. And we recognize this. And I, we do think there are good things going on up here and we appreciate that. At the same time, while those good things are going on, we gotta take care of this because it's down to the profession of this. And so, we, we recognize that this is an issue. I think what we'll probably do is, I know that we'll be discussing this again at, at another regular conference session now because we have, you know, before our regular meetings. And so we'll take all this into account. You know, we'll take everything else, you know, that, that we've been, uh, you know, talked to about, talked, talked others about. But, you know, this, this is important and I, I appreciate y'all taking the time to come here and, and, and share with us your concerns, what you feel, what the community needs to hear. And this is the, you know, the important part of the process. And I thank y'all for participating in this process. I really do, it means a lot. So I, I, I think what we'll do, I just want to open it up briefly for the members to close this out and then we'll stand on your ground. Mr. Jenkins, let's, let's start with you to close it.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't know if I have much to add at this point. I think that, uh, my recommendation to this body would be that we take, uh, the week and digest these comments and come back to our council meeting next week with, uh, at least some idea of how we might move this forward in a positive direction and solve our issue at main.
Thank you. Cleveland, sir. Uh, first and foremost, again, thank you all for coming out. It means your care. Uh, we really appreciate that. We need to help. Secondly, for everyone that's in Ward Two, please either leave me the note with your number on it or make sure I get your number. Because what you're saying, what you said tonight really matters to me and I would like to sit down and talk with you all about it. Uh, because I noticed that we're riding through the avenues and, and Mr. Rivers and Mike Lester, I can tell you, avenues in your area are horrible. I promise you. I talk about them all the time, but, you know, that, we're, that's what we gotta try to figure out. We gotta try to make it better. Appreciate you coming out. Uh, but please, please, ma'am, please, if you're in Ward Two, please wait and see. Uh, if anyone else wants to have a question or anything, just let me know. Because I grew up in Anniston, not Ward Two, but this is an Anniston problem. We all have to work together to solve it. I listen.
I just want to thank you all for coming here and having this, um, complete discussion with us. That's really what it takes, is having, uh, this conversation. And I made some bullet points of the concerns that you all stated. So I definitely will be taking all that into account. Um, and look forward to next Tuesday when we talk about a new work session and hope to see some change moving forward, whether that be a revision of it or, or doing something different. But again, I just want to thank you all for coming out.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate everyone being here. Uh, as Councilman Jenkins says, you're not the problems. You are the ones who are having to deal with the problems. And we certainly do appreciate your being here and expressing your discontent as, as we are. We're looking for a solution. And what we mentioned tonight, uh, what we brought forward are new ideas that we can take. And I will be summarizing some of those and then we'll be needing to make some decisions. But we do appreciate your input. And another element that I think we probably haven't cut on at all is education. And I think if we could get people, volunteers to go into the public schools, make the superintendent, talk to these students. When I was ten years old, the Girl Scouts, we had an anti litter campaign. You think I ever threw any trash out at the lab? And you think I chastised everybody else I saw doing it? Y'all, it, it, it comes back to our children, our students, our education.
Yeah. Yeah, just real quick, just again, thank y'all for coming out again. Again, this is an important part of the process. Uh, going through issues like this and a forum like this, again, is very helpful for us and I anticipate some of the other big issues that we're talking about. It would also be helpful to have, you know, a meeting like this, um, with, again, with some other issues that they were addressing. So again, thank y'all for coming out with that. I will move that we stand, well, actually, we don't do that. We are here.